Absent, Deputy Mayor Quinn is absent. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please stand for a silent player, a moment of reflection.
We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic whose stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 7th, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We are now on to special events applications.
The first application before you is a request across an orange for the wedding receptions in Kennedy Park on October 1st, 8th, and 22nd. Next, Garden's Equality would like to do a walk on the 7th. City's Fall Fun Festival on the 8th and Sunset Park. Project AP, which is a march in support of Holy Spirit Church, will be on October 9th. Johnson &amp; Johnson's event on October 20th. Clean Ocean Action would like to do a beach cleanup on the 22nd. The city will be holding its Animal Trumpet Tree in the parking lot on Halloween the 31st. The city's first annual anniversary ceremony will be on November 11th. And the Thanks for Giving 5K Run and Splash on November 19th. And last but not least, the Jersey Shore Rescue Mission would like to do a code giveaway for Closing the Street on November 19th. Are there any questions?
No, thank you very much.
We're now on to items to be presented. First up, we have a presentation by Carl Erler of KHBNANIAN for Workforce Development Scholarship Award.
So Mayor, can you count them? Mayor? Hello?
Hello.
So, as part of the workforce development initiative that Mayor Moore has challenged me with when I first got here, this is our first workforce development project under any workforce development regulations. Carl Erler's here from KHBNANIAN. They just completed their, they're completing their project, The Cove. And they have been a tremendous partner in trying to encourage our residents and our local businesses to participate in the workforce development programs. And this is our first time we have a scholarship award winner. His name is DeSean Esdale. So Carl's going to make a presentation, and then if Mayor Council would like to say anything as well. So Carl, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, honorable Mayor and honorable members of the council. Really appreciate, thank you for having us this evening. Yes, as your town manager has indicated, we're here to make a presentation to provide scholarship funding to Mr. DeSean Esdale, who was employed as part of our construction of our Cove community, which is located at the intersections of Asbury Avenue, Heck Street, and Cookman Avenue. Mr. Esdale is actually here in the audience. Could you join me for a moment, please? So this is Mr. DeSean Esdale, who's been involved in the construction of our project. And we have a scholarship in the amount of $10,000 that we wanted to present to Mr. Esdale this evening with the city's cooperation. I did want to mention more of the training. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You actually attended our local workforce information session, which, you know, DeSean was able to then attend as well. Believe it, believe what he got there. And actually, that led to where we are today in terms of the scholarship issues. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, hold on a second, we'll all come down and take a picture. But just, so everybody knows here and out there, this is something that was put into every agreement, be it KhBNANIAN or anyone coming down the road, Block 401, every redevelopment agreement where you have to hire so many apprentices, they go through subcontractors, you have an open house, and you were the first one to start off. We had an open house at the Boys and Girls Club. And so happy to see you do so well at this program. Unfortunately, this is open to three or four other people, where we tried to get more Asbury Park U needing jobs to come out. So the next one will be even bigger. It depends on the size of the project, how many scholarships, how many apprentices, how many, everything going. This one, you guys mustered your back trying to get people from Asbury Park jobs and everything. You did a fantastic job. Because nobody else finished like you did, you're getting all the scholarships. But, I mean, so it's money well spent, and I wish you would say a couple of words, because what you did as far as like going to work every day, what you're doing with your future is unbelievable. Your success story, very proud that you're our first one.
Thank you. I like it. It's an eye-opener, a learning experience to do better, to be better. It's a great company to work for.
Okay. Tell us a little bit, where are you going to go to school and everything?
Well, I'm in school right now at the Home Inspector. I go to New Jersey, New Jersey Home Inspector. This is a summer set, but I take a class at Churchill.
He was supposed to...
Yeah, I'm supposed to be in class right now.
We won't hold you after that.
We won't post a video.
Proud accomplishment on behalf of the city, on behalf of KhBNANIAN, all future builders. And we learned from KhBNANIAN. If you don't have an open house at Asbury Park, don't have it at the Boys Club, but it's a Saturday at 10 o'clock. Have another one at night, so we got more people there and everything. But again, thank you so much for leading us. Congratulations to you for attending. Again. Yeah. Thank you for working together.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I'm sure you're all good, guys. Want to take a picture of you guys?
Sure, I can do this over here and take a picture.
All right, let's get a little bit closer, like we like. There you go. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Great, thank you.
Shh. Congratulations.
He must have thought that so.
Okay. Were you, she was the exec? We can't even congratulate those people.
We're now on to our second presentation. This is a presentation by Asbury Partners LLC for a proposed residential development at Block 3801, Lot 1, 200 Cookman Avenue.
Good evening, everyone. Can anyone hear me through this?
We can never tell if these microphones are working or not.
Well, good evening. My name is Jennifer Phillips Smith. I'm the attorney of the individuals in the U.C. And I am here tonight on behalf of Asbury Partners LLC. As you all know, Asbury Partners is the designated master developer, the Asbury Park owner, water redevelopment area. We are here tonight to discuss our proposal for, it's actually Block 3802, Lot 1, the property that is also scheduled to have a superdual avenue, St. James Place, residential drive, and Lake Avenue. That's probably better?
No.
Scream, Jennifer, just scream.
Oh, yeah. There we go. Hopefully that's better.
It's working.
All right. So the property is also on Sunset Avenue, borders Wesley Lake Drive, St. James Place, and Lake Avenue. The proposal is for 21, for sale, townhomes to build on this lot. The lot is somewhat unique in the waterfront redevelopment area, in that when designing this project, we not only had to take into account the waterfront redevelopment plan, which governed, for example, how many stories each building is to be, but we also had to take into account the fact that the property is a flood hazard area. Specifically, the portion of the property that's closest to the lake. And we do entirely seem to account the fact that Wesley Lake Avenue exists, and that it's at a roller elevation. So you'll see that certain design choices were made for the property, specifically that the buildings were posed not too directly on the property line, but to be pushed in a bit into the lot, and that the amenity deck instead is closer to the property line. We have two individuals here to present this evening. Frank Interini, who is our project architect, and Dave Lussburg, our project landscape architect. So I'd like to turn this over to Frank to start going over, I think that'll design the project. If you could introduce yourself just for the record.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Frank Interini, principal architect at NVMK Architecture. We have been hired to design this project. We've got some drawings here tonight that I think will help everyone understand what we're proposing. And this first drawing is an aerial view that I will use to locate the property. So as Jennifer said already, we've got Cookman Avenue here, Wesley Lake here, St. James Place here, and Wesley Lake Drive there. So our property is this pinkish-purple rectangle that is about .78 of an acre. And I'll go through the plans. Importantly, as Jennifer said, this drawing shows that this is part of our planning board package. So again, according to Cookman Avenue here, Lake Avenue here, which means Wesley Lake is down at the bottom of the sheet, St. James Place to the left, which is the west, and Wesley Lake Drive to the right, which is east. This green area is area that we knew we could not construct the buildings on because of the flood hazard regulations. So with that in mind, the building was pushed towards Cookman Avenue with frontage along Cookman, St. James, and Wesley. This area that we cannot build on, we'll use for outdoor landscape amenities, which we'll, I'm not going to pick and discuss. But as Jennifer said, we're proposing 21 units within 14 separate townhomes. So we've got road townhomes here along Cookman, and you'll see this alternating colors that shows you the distinction between each of the buildings, which are attached. And each of these has two residential units. This is four-story with mezzanine in accordance with the waterfront redevelopment plan. As we move towards Lake Avenue, towards the south, the second row of structures are each individually shown here in the same color coding, but in this case, there's one unit per each of these buildings. And in this case, in accordance, as in accordance with the redevelopment plan, this, these structures are three stories tall with mezzanine. So we've got some pictures, you have a sense of apartment. And I should also mention that there is parking on site and within the building, so we've got two parking spaces for each of these units. The entry and exit is off St. James and Wesley Lake Drive. Initially, as we presented at the TRC, this was going to be a two-way drive. At the TRC, we heard their opinion, and we're going to make the combination to change this to a one-way drive, going east this direction. So now we'll go through some of the more pretty pictures, showing what the building is meant to look like. This is the Cookman Avenue elevation. Obviously, it's a contemporary building. We, it's a very considered design. Although it's neutral in colors, we've used lots of wood accents, which kind of gives us this sort of pop, as well as the many planer differences. You can see there's projections, there's changes in materials still within the gray neutral family, there's setbacks. Here's the mezzanine I mentioned before. There are entries to half of the units along this road, along the street here on Cookman. So you see there's steps here with planters. And because of the flood hazard area again, all of our residential areas have to be raised. So there's a raised walkway here that's got a very nice communication with the sidewalk, and separated with, in some areas with planters. So there's residential entry doors there. I'll move to the next one. And this is our side, this would be Wesley Lake Drive view, looking into the, we'll call it the drive aisle, which is also a walking path, and entries for, for some of the units. You see these grand stairs that enter the units that are on the backside of the building. One of the comments that the TRC had, planning board, was that they thought we should pay a bit more attention to these street facades, which right now are, are a tile that's meant to mimic the concrete, but with a very neat and, and fine-edged tile. So we are going to take another look at this, propose a bit more color down here perhaps, as well as more punctures. So we understand their point, and that will be addressed. And here you can see very easily the difference between the two, the two structures. This being three stories with mezzanine. Here is Lake Avenue, Wesley Lake, that direction. And here's Cookman here, and here's the four-story section. So keep going. This would be the opposite. Let me see now. Okay, again, this is Cookman, Cookman here, so as I talked about before, these are the main entries along Cookman, some balconies, very shallow balconies, just meant for simple outdoor space, not enough to put a table, but enough that someone can stand up there or sit with a chair. Again, the four-story section, the three-story section. I used the word consider before talking about the design, but we really have paid a lot of attention and made great efforts to make this a visually interesting building. I hope that reads through. This is our material board, and I talked about some of it. So at the base, we've got a tile, porcelain tile, that is meant to mimic a very smooth concrete. We've got wood accents, which will be a composite wood, last much better given the conditions. We've got some carated metals and some ACM pounds, which are a metal flat pan. Most of it's in gray and white tones, very neutral in color, with the exception of lots of the accents. Thought process we had was that there's so much going on, you think with the in and the out and the movement up the facade, that adding color here would probably not be the right place to do it. So that's, that's the extent of the renderings. Happy to ask, answer questions regarding particularly unit sizes or anything else you may think you, you're interested in. But again, it's 21 residential units with row houses along Cookman. They are connected and row along Lake, although they setback because of the property, as I mentioned, we were not allowed to construct.
And so we also would like to have our landscape architect describing, then the exec, but maybe you're, you follow this proposal. So, I'm going to ask, save some confidence, give that part of the presentation.
Do you know how to do that? An add-on?
I do. You're also here.
If you would mind, if you can just see yourself.
To give us a plot.
Something like the other one. Something come out of it.
You want to go to the start?
Good evening. My name is Dave Lussburg. I'm a principal landscape architect with a firm that I also own, called Arterial. We're located in Montclair, New Jersey. So I'll take you quickly through the amenity space. I can, on the edges of the site here. All right, so first we'll look at the site plan. So the perimeter of the site has ample sidewalks around the perimeter, in line with the infrastructure report. Existing street trees along Cookman will remain. Along Lake Ave, there will also be ample sidewalks and new shade trees provided, again in keeping with the infrastructure report. This space here is the amenity space that we're referring to, that's located along Lake Avenue. The amenity space is comprised of a couple of key elements. First, along the building itself will be private patios for the residents. Then the central space here is a pool deck, and there will be a lap pool located in that area. By a lap pool, I mean a pool that's approximately seven feet wide by 50 feet long, so it's really perfect for, for that use. And then on this edge of the site, there will be a shade structure with some barbecues and some outdoor dining space located at this corner. We've taken really a lot of care in the treatment of the streets here along Lake Avenue. So there is a seven-foot landscape buffer between the amenity space and the sidewalk itself, so we can't leave landscape as a buffer. And located within that space will be a fence that encloses the amenity space and the pool area. So just for clarification, there were a couple of discrepancies in the, in the TRC report, so I want to clarify how the fence actually works here. So there is a fence that's four and a half feet tall that extends from the building itself around the perimeter of the site, and then ties into this central feature here that aligns with the pool. And this is 50 feet long. The fence then picks up again at the edge of that feature and works the perimeter of the site here and ties back into the building. The central feature is six feet on the two mirror walls and seven feet in the center. And that acts as a backdrop to, you know, one of our favorite features of the design here, which is a public parklet. So in the center of the block, we designed a parklet that faces the street, that's open to the public, it's about 350 square feet, and it will include seating, landscaping, and a mural wall behind it, which I'll show you some renderings of. As part of the TRC review, they recommended that the fence be made slightly higher from four foot six, so that's something that we're going to address at site plan. So here is a view along Lake Ave. So this is looking from the corner of St. James East, so you can see along the left-hand side here, ample buffer. Here is the fence located within the planting bed, and then here in the distance, you can see the parklet. And now this is a view of that central parklet area, so you can see it's a really nice space. It's again 50 feet long by about seven feet deep. Seating, landscaping, and then you can see in the center here, this is an opportunity for public art, so this will be a mural wall as it's proposed now. And then just pulling back from that, just so you can see the kind of that elevation, how that fence works, and you can see the pool here, that feature in the center. This is the shade structure with some tables beneath it. And that's, you know, that's, that's, you know, a quick overview of that amenity space. So I'll have to answer any questions about that.
So just one other, I, we did receive a question. Did you get this to read it? The number of comments on the Friday, too. The excited reservations, do you want to answer them? All of these are addressed on the, on the planning board, please hand, address all of those. Some of the markets objected about maybe altering the color of the building. I think we would rather work with the planning board on identifying exactly, you know, what's meant by that, how to address that particular comment. But all of these comments can be addressed in one way or another, through testimony with planning board or plan changes. And that concludes our presentation. Unless there are questions.
I've got nothing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Chapman?
Sure. So the Asbury Park Arts Council is undertaking a process of developing an arts and cultural plan for the city of Asbury Park. The process is just getting underway. They're getting out into the community to speak with people. They're attending various festivals and events in the park. But you can also go to their website, asburyartscouncil.org, and fill out a survey, or you could pick up one of these cards over there on the table and also help to provide information. The other thing is that we are having a coffee with the council person on Saturday at 10:30 at the Cameo Love Market with myself and Jesse Kendall, again, this Saturday, 10:30. Thank you.
Councilmember Clayton?
Okay. This Saturday is scheduled for the Quality of Life Committee, a community festival in Springwood Park. It is going to be a great event. We have a clothing giveaway, food giveaway, free haircuts for kids, a number of health screenings, screenings for diabetes, heart attacks, HIV/AIDS. It just goes on and on and on. So we hope everybody will be coming out. If we have to cancel because of storm, we will make that decision on Friday by noon, and it will be postponed to the following Saturday in Springwood Park, and the hours are scheduled for. Also, there's entertainment. There's going to be professional singers, gospel, a little of everything. So please come out and celebrate the community of Asbury Park.
Thank you. Mayor Moore?
Yes, just a quick follow-up. So happy to see, what I would call him a young gentleman, get that scholarship, because we go back many years. He worked for me at DPW as a seasonal employee. It was an excellent employee then. So happy to see him take advantage of this project and this program. Workforce development is key to the city. Unfortunately, only one took advantage of this one. The project just shown they will have a workforce development, and every project from here on out will have it. So we'll try to do a better job of getting out the word and everything, getting more people employed, where they can learn a trade, apprentice, and then get a scholarship to continue their education in that trade. Or, and even subcontractors can apply for jobs, be it painting, drywall, anything. So again, it's an open project, and it was key to Asbury Park because of Dwayne Small and other people saying, but Asbury Park needs is a workforce development project. So I'm so happy that, he's a fine young gentleman, he's going to go far, he's going to stay with KhBNANIAN, or either open up his own company one day. So again, to me, that's a success story, and you know, it started off small, it takes one step to start the journey. So thank you all, that's it.
Thank you. Matters from City Manager?
I have nothing to say.
Thanks. Matters from the City Attorney?
I'd like to say.
Thanks. We're now on to the public participation portion of the meeting. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Thank you.
Second?
Thanks. All in favor?
Okay.
Public participation is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Is this on? I don't think it's on. What is it? We think it's on?
Yes.
You all can hear me?
Yeah.
You want to hear me?
Yes.
Because it'd be different if you didn't hear me and want to hear me. Nobody on that Davis wants to hear me, just me. So, finally the chief shows up.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Excuse me?
Your name and address for the record.
Oh, sorry. Ernest George, 710 North 37th Street, Unit 407, W. D. Flora, 33435. Formerly at 400 D.L.A. Drive, San Andrew, the building that's collapsing. Like the rest of the buildings that are collapsing in the city. But nobody seems to care about it, or public safety or anything. Just keep partying, that's the way it works. No violations. And it's very hard for the public. I do a lot of press work. It's almost impossible to keep up with what's going on in Asbury, the way everything is sort of kept on the QT, you know? Like, I'm a press person that got in a federal trial, United States versus Donald J. Trump. You know what it took to have a press potential to get in that federal courtroom? And yet, when I call Asbury, nobody will talk to me. They go, "Oh, you're fake press, you're fake." I'm fake. I'll tell you what's fake in this city, and it's not me. And I had 14 years here, and I learned a lot. And I was born in Longbridge, and raised in Asbury and Longbridge. And I can tell you something. In my opinion, there's nobody, regular people, has a chance, in my opinion, and Longbridge and Asbury especially, has taken over. It's taken over. No matter what you do, your tax money goes into the political movement, the police movement, the fire movement, which is huge amounts of the budget. It's so far out of control that you got to keep developing just to raise the money to pay all these taxes of all these people that we don't need. It's endless. If you look at the records of the police or the fire, fire doesn't prevent fires. They don't write fire violations. Police don't prevent crime. They don't solve crime, right? The politics, all they do is shut you up at meetings. And then every time you help get rid of a prosecutor like Linsky, who helped ruin this town, who I like to take a lot of credit, you know? I wrote a lot of letters about her. Isn't that right, Mr. Raffredo? And look at this. Here's a guy who I said shouldn't be here, but now, look, they work some deal. He quits Ansel Grammerran, he does his own law firm, and he's back again. You think that pleases me? Can I get an extra two minutes?
Next.
I gotta go to Longbridge.
Hello, my name is Ashley Burgos. I'm a resident of Asbury Park. Myself and my family have been here since every city council meeting, since the death of my fiance. So a lot of people still don't know the story, so I just want to put that out there really quickly. My fiance, Kayshon Washington Walker, he was murdered on the 1600 block of Soul Avenue on July 28. There's still an active investigation on finding his killer. I just want to come up here. We have a march. Innocent, murdered innocently. We have a march tomorrow at 6:00 PM, starting on the 1600 block of Soul Avenue. So I just wanted to invite everyone to the march tomorrow. And last, two weeks ago, we were here. We did have a question about how we would be able to either match or add additional funds to the Crime Stoppers reward. I just didn't know if you guys were able to discuss that and what kind of conclusion that came to with able to up the reward for the Crime Stoppers.
Is that it? Okay, is that it? Well, thank you because we should have made the announcement about the march. So it is tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, starting on the 1600 block of Soul. And I believe we're going to Springwood Avenue Park.
Yes.
Okay, and there'll be police leading the way, so it'll be very safe and everything. As far as the question, as far as can we match it, we're still looking into the legal liability.
Okay. Would you guys be getting back to us in the form of an email or a phone?
As soon as we get a legal opinion with, from three different lawyers, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. See you tomorrow evening.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. About the Sound Council, the Art Council, is that, are they the ones that painted the sewer plant and got $10,000? Are we going to hire them? This is another time to be hiring people. This is a time that you have to really close the gap and lower the expenses of the city with what's going on. And the other thing, I, I'm not whistling Dixie, am I? When I asked you about the sign in the park, I mean, that's just a yes or no answer. Are you going to do something about it? And the other thing, I think I called you, Ms. City Manager, and I asked you to have a report here about the beach report and the parking report, which we used to get regularly. We haven't had one. And the other thing I just noticed, came up Cookman Avenue. They have tables by the curb. You go, where are the people walking? They got it all closed up there on where Steinbach's used to be. That, that's got to be looked at. That's a public sidewalk. Nobody can walk on it now? And that's it. But could I have an answer about, are you hiring the Art Council? I hope not.
So no, Rita, we're not hiring anyone. Actually, this year's budget, I've advised my department heads that there will be a zero increase other than contractual, so there will be no new hires for an Arts Council. And I'll answer your questions regarding the beach and transportation reports. The Beach Committee has not met yet to review the beach season. Once that's done, we're meeting tomorrow. I'll have a report to council by the next meeting. Same with transportation. James is working on his final report and will probably have that the end of October, early November.
The parking report?
Yeah, parking. So we'll have a transportation update at the end of October, early November. And the beach report update will be done once I meet with my Beach Committee. The season just ended about a month ago.
The, the numbers aren't 100% complete yet, so we're hoping by the next meeting, we'll have a complete report for you for the beach. And the parking and transportation will be either October or November. And it won't be a complete report because the fiscal year is not over to December, but we'll give you a partial report through like, say, October 30th. We'll give you the first meeting in November.
And when is the next parking meeting?
Wednesday.
First Wednesday of the month. Thanks, Jordan.
Okay. We have a lot to say about that.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Michael Anthony Turner, resident of Asbury Park for the last, since 2017. And I was a resident at the Del Monte Hotel. I have pictures that I had to pay for just to put the proof out here. People in there are dying every year. We don't know from what, okay? We don't have no history of no health problems. I have a health problem now. Mold and mildew throughout the building, electrical problems. I called the Health Department for the last two years. No one responds. Nobody. And people in there are dying every year. We don't know from what. We're inhaling all of this. I have pictures. I paid $30 for this just to put it out here. We need help. I'm moving, okay, Friday, but they need help. We need help. Trust me. It only took me a minute, okay? Because the pictures are self-explanatory. And it's not just this hotel. It's all the ones they own. I did my own investigating, okay? And I'm not allowing any of their other buildings because of what I'm doing. They're hiding things, they're covering things up. Who, who do we get to touch with? Health Department, like I said, two years haven't called me. I leave messages. Where do we begin?
Okay, Mr. Turner.
I tried to leave the pictures with y'all. I got them in my phone. I'm going to keep going and going and going with this. This is terrible. It's really terrible. We need help. You can guide me. Guide me in a right direction and I will follow.
Okay, I'll give you the guidance. I agree with you on the Del Monte. The city's had problems with the Del Monte in the past where the city has wanted to do inspections. We've been barred from going inside because it's under state DCA.
Yes.
So that's who you got to get in touch with, the state DCA. We, we will reach out tomorrow to the DCA and file complaints saying like the citizen came to the council meeting with pictures and said X, Y, and Z, exactly what you said. And but again, a couple of years ago, I don't know if you were there or not. I mean, we wanted to do an inspection. It was before Donna was here. And we had our fire department with code department, everybody ready to go. And there was two DCA inspectors on the porch saying, you're not allowed on the property. And that's state law. We cannot go into that property without their permission. And stupid state law, which will help you fight with. And we can even reach out to, say, where you should also go to is Senator Gopals, our senator and our two Assemblywomen, to let them know. And like, this happened again, I'm going to say several years ago, before COVID, when there was like all the problems up in the Manalpin, where the same thing, where people, same type of facility, and that town was going crazy too because they were not let in to do the inspections. So we're, our, our hands are tied by DCA. We're not allowed in there. We'll pass the complaints on to them and we'll get back to you.
What, the Governor's aide, Alex? Have Alex get involved?
Yeah, we have a liaison from the Governor's office. We'll get in touch with him tomorrow and let him know of your complaint and see if he can like get anything to get DCA down there to do another inspection. But, you know, we've tried to get in there, they won't let us in.
Okay, but is there a way for someone to get in touch with me where I could point out the spots? You know, I could give them the pictures of where to go and, you know, because something has to be done.
If you want to leave a phone number or something with the city manager or?
Email, I have it all.
Why don't you give me your email and a contact and I'll copy my email to the Governor's aide directly with you?
Okay.
Okay.
Right, so if you give that, you'll be on the emails to see that we are following through.
Donna, do you want to take the pictures? You can send them as well.
I don't want to take your only set of pictures.
Excuse me?
I don't want to take your only set of pictures.
They're in my phone. You can have them. It was worth $30, trust me.
You know, why don't you hang on to them so when Alex reaches out to you? So why don't we come over here and I'll take your name and I'll take care of it.
Good evening. Thank you. My name's?
Okay, let's just wait until the city manager's back. Just give us a minute.
Oh, okay.
I can hold that pass, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Allison Marshall, Asbury Park resident. And I should have gone before him because now I feel like my complaint sounds trivial. I'm here to speak on the See Here Now Festival. As an 8th Avenue resident, I know that this festival is only going to grow as I've already seen it grow from the first year exponentially. And it's encroaching further and further into the year-round residents' lives. I'm all for the festival. Do I enjoy listening to it all weekend long? No, I do not. Do I attend it? No, I do not. I'm not here to try to stop it. But from the first year to this year, it grew. And we're now seeing the whole entire north end of the beach closed. There was no signage two weeks prior. You know, I go up with friends and it's closed. There's no one there to guide anyone. But so the encroachment into our lives is going to grow. My number one complaint was, and I believe that my homeowner spoke to you, Eileen, or emailed you. The minute that that show was over, we all who were happy that it was over, were happy it was over until immediately they started breaking it down. We listened to the backup beep of the truck, not only for the first two weeks while it was being built, but through the night, from 10 until 4:00 in the morning. I knew not to call the police because it's not a police issue. I don't even think you all could have done anything about it. It just feels like they're doing whatever they want to do. And I feel like it's just going to grow and we lose more and more control. And, you know, we, locals live for September and to have half of the beach closed, I just was very unhappy. And like I said, I know it's going to grow. And I don't know what the city can do to better rein in and have some control over its growth because I know you all don't have any part in the actual setting up and the trucks breaking down at, you know, 10:30 through the night. But I know I speak for a lot of residents and I'm actually shocked that there aren't more here to speak on it. So thank you very much for your time.
Oh, thank you. And we do have something to say about it because, yes, and you're not the only one who's complained. And some of them, I think, have stuff that we can definitely make better in future years. As far as growing, it won't grow as far as size because we capped it at 35,000. So it's not going to get any bigger, it's not going to go 50,000 or anything like that. But I, I agree with you as far as like if we say, hey, look, you know, come on, you got to stop that beep, beep, beep. That would drive me crazy all night long too. So there's some things like we can definitely tell them, no, it happened last year, but it's not happening next year. And so there are things we can do. We're making a list and we'll meet with them and tell them like for this to go off next year, some things are going to have to be changed. We're going to have to work together. We're going to have better, signage should have been put up. I thought it was put up and maybe we'll have to do a better job of checking it ourselves. But some legitimate complaints and some legitimate complaints from other people besides yourself that we're definitely going to look into and make sure that anything we can change for the better of everybody, especially the people living in that immediate area, will be done for next year.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I sent Marie Bessolini, Asbury Park, Ocean Avenue. I sent you the video. Did you get that video?
No.
All right. I even signed up for a special program to send it, but whatever.
I got your email.
I'm sorry?
I got your email.
You got my email? I, I sent the video through We, I think. Okay, whatever. I took videos of what went on after the festival. I wish I had videos of before the festival. We were totally caged in, fencing all around the building. We had, the beach was closed on the 9th of September. We didn't get access to the beach again until the 21st. The video I tried to send you shows you knocking, it had stated the 20th, the Tuesday, September 20th, they were still taking the blocks off the beach. So we went from the 9th to the 20th without a beach. The fishermen, the dog park, they had a sign up that said, "Closed from September 9th to September 23rd." I have people responding to me saying, oh, it's only two or three days. That is so false. It is not two or three days. It's more like 20, exactly. Well, not 20, but close to it. We had porta potties outside our building, right outside our windows, porta potties. We have a section outside the building. I pay for two parking permits, $180 a year. Normally, I have a spot to park inside the building, but my children don't. They normally would park outside there. Nope, they couldn't because what did they have there? The carts to move the VIPs back and forth to the festival. And you know something? I feel terrible about this. I really do because this is so trivial as to what you women are going through. Believe me, it's like, it does sound trivial, but it's not to us while it's going on. It's not to us. And you really need to see, I don't know how I'm going to get those videos to you. I can show them to you now off my phone. Porta potties, noise, noise, like the young lady said, the noise that beeped sound of these things. It's a lot more than two or three days and something needs to be done. I think they need to take it to the other side. Take it to the south side. Take it all past the convention center. I marked it. It's almost a mile of beach. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Again, thank you. And again, some mistakes made this year that we're going to try to correct next year.
I hope so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Louise Murray, Grand Avenue. I don't have the ordinance 2022-11. I don't have my glasses either. Anyway, could you run that reverter in the deed for the property commonly known as my 28 Gangs Avenue?
It's going to be pulled from tonight's agenda.
I'm sorry?
That's going to be pulled from tonight's agenda.
Okay, so then I'll be able to pull it up. That's right. And the other thing is, T and M, does he have, he has jurisdiction over our traffic lights and all this other nonsense going on in town? Because there is also, there's a resolution here, 2022-405, authorizing design services, contract administration, inspection services. uh, twenty twenty-two, four oh five, authorizing design services, contract administration, inspection services to T N M associates for safe routes to traffic, transit traffic signals installation at Prospect Avenue and Bangs Avenue. Does that include that light out there? Over, when you leave this municipal building and you go out there? That light is the worst, John. You're sitting at that light for at least four minutes, three minutes. We couldn't even cross the street.
Yeah, so no, as far as like, go ahead, with anything else?
That's all, now, I, I'm just complaining about stuff.
I, I agree with you with that light, and James is still doing the punch down. The problem with that light is like, when people are trying to get out of the parking lot, if they're not like, in the view of the camera that shows them there, they're either too forward or too far back, you'll sit there for like, two hours, I agree with you. I don't go out that way.
No, wait, hold it, we were crossing the street on the other side, and we were watching, you know, we're paying attention to the, the hand up, wait for that to change. We stood there for about three minutes, four minutes, or better.
Because, because it doesn't change unless there's a car trying to get out of the parking lot, there's a camera on it. There's a lot of lights to that.
They think nobody walks anymore.
But, a lot of lights are like that, well, there should be a push button there to cross.
There is.
Okay, so if you push that.
But e, even when you drive out of that line, it's like, you wanna, you wanna shoot yourself.
I agree with you, hopefully on the punch list, hopefully on the punch list, New Jersey Transit will, not, not, New Jersey D O T will fix that.
Okay, so this other thing.
But that, no, but, no, that, that is just for that one intersection that's listed at Bangs and Prospect. The T N M, and T N M's the city engineer. So they're doing the plans, uh, doing the survey, making sure all the A D A, because, you know, it's right by the middle school and by Sheffield, and it's a crazy intersection with five. So I, I question the cost where it's a little bit higher than I'm gonna say, like, the traffic, like, we just put on, on Asbury and Ridge. And it's a couple thousand dollars more, but it's because of like, it's five intersections instead of four. But, uh, that's, that's what it costs to engineer like, New Jersey.
All right, okay.
But that is that, just that one, I, I totally agree. I don't try to get in line there because you, you'll wait forever, I go out this way.
I know, but we were just walking across the street.
No, Louise, I agree with you. And you can sit there for an hour. Anybody else like to be heard?
No.
No?
No?
Wait, going out this way?
No, circles around.
Yeah, it goes, it goes around, and you can either make a right or make a left to the railroad tracks or go to Main Street. You're up.
All right, all right, all right.
Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Jordan, Thousand One Second Avenue. So, um, a little bit of chest beating, a little bit of whining, a little bit of pleading. Um, so, um, so seven years ago, when Asbury was not the Ferrari-filled, hundred-dollar parking area that it is now, um, when people wouldn't know the west side from the wood side, um, thanks to some encouragement from all of you, especially, uh, Assistant Mayor Quinn, who's not here, uh, we started Porch Fest. Um, we got about a thousand people the first year, we got seven thousand people this year. So in that time, uh, Porch Fest has donated over fifty thousand dollars to Asbury Park charities. Our contributions have put up gardens, murals, we've contributed to the future opening of the Asbury Park Turf Club. Proudly wearing the T-shirt, thank you. Paid my twenty bucks. Um, and, uh, even, but most importantly, we provided more than five thousand meals to Asbury Park food-deprived, uh, people, or food-needs people, I don't even know the correct term anymore, sorry. Um, so how do we do this? Essentially, Asbury Park Porch Fest is all volunteers, right? Nobody gets paid anything, musicians don't get paid anything. And so, we raise the money, um, so while we are contributing to Asbury Park and showing our love, we're not really feeling it back sometimes. So last year, for example, we applied for our date, um, and two months later, Zombie Fest applied for the same date and was granted a permit on the same day, straining the police, um, even though we had applied for ours before that. This year, we came in, we were told, okay, you can't have a Zombie Fest date, okay, you can't have an Asbury Park Fest date, okay, of course you can't have a See Here Now date. Do you want that? I'd love to go to all of these festivals, I think Danny and Tim do a great job. But, there was not one, not two, but three music permits, um, three police, um, guards, three festivals that were allowed, music festivals that were allowed the exact same day as Porch Fest. Now, unless my third grade math teacher was wrong, there's a hundred and fifty-six weeknet, weeknight, sorry, weekend nights in a year. Why did those three need to be done? So, that's the whining, there's chest beating, here's the plea. Um, I hate to say this, but I'm taking a page from our beloved code enforcement. If I wanna change the front door on a house in Asbury Park, I have to tell all the other residents and they have, in the area, and they have a chance to comment. So the one change I would like to make is, once we have our date, which we're now locked into for the second Saturday in September, if anybody else wants to come in and have a music festival, please, you all have my cell phone number, you all know where I live, you all have my email, please tell us and allow us to plead our case before you just unilaterally say yes. Secondly, by the way, in my last eight seconds, just in case you're considering it, we could have actually doubled our contribution this year, um, except for our police budget, so maybe if we pay for street closures, um, maybe you guys can provide some lease. It just would increase our donations. Thank you, sorry, done whining.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, legitimate request, and I think we can handle that. As far as somebody else applies for a date, we'll just give you a call and give you a heads up.
Go ahead.
Okay.
We can certainly, we can certainly discuss it in special events, absolutely.
Right, mm-hmm, yep. Anybody else like to be heard? Motion to close.
Move to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed, we're now on to the minutes. We have the executive meeting minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the regular meeting minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution twenty twenty-two, four zero two, a resolution approving special event applications.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four zero three, a resolution approving the payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four zero four, a resolution awarding bid for transportation center renovations.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four zero five, a resolution authorizing design services, contract administration, and inspection services to T N M associates for safe routes to transit, traffic signal installation at Prospect Avenue and Bangs Avenue.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four zero six, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of special items of revenue in the twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to N J S A forty A colon four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, Asbury Avenue Bike Way Project Grant.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four zero seven, a resolution of the City of Asbury Park, the County of Monmouth, the State of New Jersey, providing for insertion of special items of revenue in the twenty twenty-two budget of the City of Asbury Park pursuant to N J S A forty A colon four dash eighty-seven, chapter one fifty-nine, Safe Streets to Transit Program.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four ten, a resolution accepting an agreement modification of a transportation alternatives grant and associated design assistance from N J D O T and authorizing signatories.
Move it.
Check it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four eleven, a resolution to adjust sewer charges on various accounts.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-two, four twelve, a resolution appointing a municipal clerk for the City of Asbury Park, Lisa Esposito, R M C C M R.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we're now on to ordinances for introduction. Um, ordinance twenty twenty-two, dash, eleven will be removed from tonight's agenda. We will move on to ordinance twenty twenty-two, dash, twelve. This is an ordinance amending and supplementing subsection twelve, dash, one point three, entitled Fees of Section Twelve, Dash, One, State Uniform Construction Code Enforcing Agency of Chapter Twelve, Building and Construction of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, with a public hearing date of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was the date?
Uh, public hearing date, October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're now on to, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-two, dash, thirteen, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Three, Police Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park in certain limited respects, with a public hearing date of October twelfth, twenty twenty-two.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Uh, if no one has anything else, we're on to adjournment.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.